Welcome to the second part of tonight's League of Women Voters Candidate Forum for the April 2 election. My name is Gloria Kupischak and I'm representing the League of Women Voters as your moderator for this part of the debate. Candidates for the Wisconsin Rapids School Board will be featured in this part of our forum. Those candidates are Mary Breom, Ann Lee, and Troy Byer. All three are vying for two seats on the Wisconsin Rapids School Board. We remind our viewing audience that they can call in their questions at 423-0441. We will begin tonight with opening comments from our candidates and we will start with you, Mary Breom.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to begin by thanking the League of Women Voters.
Breom, sorry, I forgot. And I've been serving on the school board for 18 years. My husband, Tom, is a city alderman and our five children are graduates of Lincoln High School and have successfully gone on to either graduate from college or enter the workforce in the vocational technical trades. We have three grandchildren. Jacob graduated from Lincoln last year and is a freshman at UW-Lacrosse. Taylor is a junior at Lincoln High School and Jet is a second grader at Grant Elementary, where I volunteer reading weekly there. Public education is so important to me because of the impact it makes to meet the needs of all our learners regardless of their abilities, upbringing, or whether they come from a wealthy home or are experiencing homelessness. We serve the needs of all children and I'm thankful to be involved through my service on the board to help support the many ways we work together to meet those diverse needs. Over the years, we've made both popular and unpopular decisions and I try to listen to all viewpoints and vote the way I feel is the best for the interests of the students. A recent decision that was made on the board was to restructure our grade levels, moving the ninth grade to Lincoln High School and the eighth grade to the middle school beginning the school year. Our board works in a respectful, civil manner which helps us make well-informed decisions, some difficult at times, with the best interest of students always. I would like to continue serving on the school board because I know the future of our world is in the hands of the children we are educating today. We need strong schools, the best employees on the job, engaged parental support, and a community that cares about its kids, to be working together to meet the needs of all children. I look forward to our discussion tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Breom. Ann Lee.
Hello. Thank you for having us here to the League and to thank you to the audience for joining in and asking questions and being informed. I was first elected to the school board in 2007 and consider serving the last 12 years an honor and a pleasure. I am Mary Tamark and we have two children who are both graduates of Lincoln High School. We are also raising our six-year-old grandson who is in kindergarten at Woodside School. I have been a teacher, first teaching fifth grade language arts in a suburb of Chicago, and when we moved to Wisconsin Rapids, I taught third and then kindergarten while also being the principal at St. Lawrence School. While my older kids were students at Woodside, I was involved as a volunteer in the PTO and as a helper in the reading recovery program. I'm once again volunteering at Woodside to support my grandson. I'm our district's representative on the CISA-V board of control. CISA stands for Cooperative Educational Service Agency. A CISA helps districts by providing services such as special education providers, teachers of the deaf and hard of hearing, teachers of the blind, psychologists, and physical therapists, among other things. They also help with business office tasks and superintendent searches. Many of these services are to help smaller districts who do not have enough qualifying students to warrant hiring a full-time person. We also use some of these services, for instance, for a teacher of the hard of hearing. I consider it my responsibility to go to professional development and so I do attend many workshops. Our school board organization, which is known as WASBE, offers.
Thank you, Ann. Troy Byer.
I would like to begin by thanking the League of Women Voters for hosting these forums, through tonight's forums and all the other forums hosted this week. It's a great way to showcase the important issues and how to make our communities stronger. I would also like to thank those in attending tonight and those watching at home or on other platforms. It is important for us to be engaged and it's important for us to be aware of the issues facing us as voters. Tonight, I look forward to discussing education policy and I got into this race because I think that we can do better. As a district, we need to fight for funding and safety and we need to better address the issue of bullying in our schools. What we need is a renewed district task force. We must focus on evaluating the district's current programs and practices and we have to look overall and raise awareness of bullying happening in our schools. The bottom line is that we must come together as a community to address this increasing epidemic. When we put the well-being of our students first and foremost, we make our communities stronger for all involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Troy Byer. We'll begin with you, Ann, for the first question. What are the most critical funding or financial issues facing the district?
Thank you, Gloria. Funding is a perennial problem. We are constantly searching for ways to maintain our programs and still pay for them. Our previous governor, of course, had some different ideas on what should be funded and how it should be funded. I do have a copy of what the current governor is proposing in his budget and I'm very happy to see that there are many increases in AIDS to our students. He is trying to put the brakes a bit on funding for voucher schools and he's just very pro education and so I'm hoping that with a little luck, he'll be able to pass at least some of those ideas that he has brought forth.
Thank you, Ann. Troy Byer.
I agree with, want to start by saying I agree with everything that Ann said. I think turning the page, we have a governor who takes education funding very seriously and some of the top issues that we need to keep addressing are the issues of funding and safety, which are essential for a well-operating school district. We need to fight for well-funded schools because a strong district is essential to not only the success of the students but to the whole community as well. In addressing school safety, we must ensure that students, parents, and teachers feel safe during the day and I feel like we're turning a page in terms of education policy where we have allies now at the state level who take funding, safety, all across our schools seriously.
Thank you, Troy Byer. Mary Breom.
And I would say, funding has been an issue since I've been on the board 18 years ago. They said before that they were always, they had extra money and they needed to do something with that extra money. When I got on, they cut a million dollars and it's been like that ever since. And we talked about school funding for a long time. I can remember talking to a couple of legislators and saying, you know, why can't we fix this? Why can't we change this? And I've talked to them from both sides and they both told me because nobody wants to vote for something that's going to hurt their district and our districts are all different. So in 2000, I just wrote that down because I went to a legislative seminar with the business officials and they had a representative from the Blue Ribbon Commission on school funding and they started this commission. They said it was going to happen in 2017. In 2019, they had held then hearing sessions. In 2019, January, they gave it to the senators and so now they're going to start bringing it to the public. And I did write a couple of things down because, you know, I hope it happens because we have so many unfunded mandates that we can't, we need more money, we need to look at how we use our money. But the four recommendations that were discussed at this meeting that I thought, and special education is really, is a critical one. Special ed costs and an adequate recognition in the formula. We need funding mechanism that's steady and predictable because each year, we have no idea what we're going to be, where we're going to be at. We wait. We need to recognize student poverty in the funding formula and also to balance the state and distribution throughout the year. So, good luck to them.
Thank you very much, Mary Breom. Troy Byer, we'll start with you on the next question. Bullying in our schools is a recurring headline. How is this issue being handled and what would you recommend?
First of all, I think that's a very good question and at the local level, it's something, not only at the local level but all school districts, it's something we have to address. I think we can do better to address this issue at the local level and take a look at the bullying happening in our schools. And in my opening statement, I will say that again because what I believe is we need a renewed district task force and we need to look at the current programs and practices and how we handle these issues when they arise. We need to investigate our options and how we address these issues as well as looking, among other things. The bottom line is that we must come together as a community to address this increasing epidemic that's taking place in our schools and I think the best way to do that is getting together and having a task force of some sort to really spearhead and tackle these issues.
Thank you, Troy Byer. Mary Breom.
Okay, thank you. Yes, this definitely is an important issue. We've had a couple of parents come to our meetings and speak on it. So I did look at some of the things that we're doing. As a board, we review our board policies to make them up to date, to bring them up to date. What needs to happen though, when bullying does happen, that needs to be reported to someone because if we don't know, if a teacher doesn't know or a principal doesn't know, there's nothing we can do about it. If they do, and we also have, there's an app on, it's called, is it Stop?
Stop.
Stop It. Stop It. It's an app. You can anonymously report bullying or harassment. If you go onto the webpage and put Stop It, they will, you'll find your school that you can report, that you can report it to. But we just got some information about what are elementary schools because we are handling it in the schools. All of the elementary schools have something, a part in their curriculum, some, and I will just do, some of them have different ways that they do it, some have creation of friendship, how to say no, ways to speak up for yourself, how to be a good friend. Rams are middle school. Some of their initiatives are Cool To Be Kind Club and this is with Lincoln High School students who come over and they actually meet with the kids and put on little skits and tell them how to be kind, how to be kind to each other. At Lincoln, we have Bully Awareness Week in October, we have Mental Health Awareness Week in May, the Name It and Claim It students. We also have staff development for our staff, so I think the school is doing what they can. I think, I think, I think really the big thing is you need to let someone know. We need to let, we need to let people know. The kids have been, the students have been trained and it's talked about at the orientations that if they cease their friends being bullied, that they should stand up and speak for them and I think that's, that is being helped. But I do agree, it is definitely, it needs to be addressed.
Thank you, Mary Breom. Ann Lee.
Thank you. I agree 100% with Mary. She's already listed so many of the programs that we do have. I think that parents and community members need to realize that the administration of all of our schools, right up to central office, are very conscious of the bullying problem. They work with kids and the problem probably every day, I hate to say, but I would imagine that that is true. We do so much anti-bullying education just at Woodside and one other school in the district. They're having a program all year about kindness, about how we deal with each other with kindness and I just find those types of programs really heartwarming and very necessary. However, to go back to my original point, our administration is dealing with this. We can't always say, we can hardly ever say what they are doing. If your child was being bullied or was a bully, you would not want that news to be broadcast across town. We have to remember the privacy issues that we deal with on a daily basis and we are not going to publicize a lot of what goes on as a result of bullying. And so I just want to reassure all of our community that we are working on bullying. We are having professional development on it. We work with the kids very, very closely and so we are trying to keep all of our children safe. Troy mentioned safety as being a big issue and it is and that is what we are working very hard on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann Lee. Mary Breom, we'll begin with you on this question. The poverty level in Wisconsin Rapids is approximately 11%. How does the school district address this issue?
Well, I would guess, I would say, I wouldn't guess. You know, when kids come to school, they have to be taken care of and they will address the issues as they come. The programming is, you know, especially at mead school. I know they have lots of programs. I'm just trying to think. Let's see. And with, I think with poverty is the social emotional needs. I think that's where, that is the issue that I think that we need to address. I think we need to have more staff in our schools. I go in, when I go into classrooms, if there's a child that needs some additional help and it's usually a child who's probably comes to school hungry or, you know, doesn't have a parent or a grandparent that helps them at night, I think those kinds of issues, the teacher has to stop and she has to take care of that and you've got 20 other little ones that need their help and I think that's a big issue. I know we have the caring closet where we have clothes for kids. We have lunch, lunch programs where we send home a lunchbox over the weekend so that parents, that they will have food that they can have for the weekend. We have the breakfast in the morning for kids and I think in most of our schools and a lot of them have, you know, are free and reduced, so it's free at most of the schools. So I think those are probably some of the ways that we do it, but there's a lot that has to be done.
Thank you, Mary Breom. Ann Lee.
I agree with Mary. We do have quite a few programs to help with kids who live in poverty. We have the free and reduced hot lunch and breakfast programs. We feed children snacks. We have a grant to provide healthy snacks for children in mead school and I believe how. And we have lots of programs to help our children who live in poverty. The one thing that I think that poverty brings up, and we have talked quite a bit about this issue, is the achievement gap. A lot of children who live in poverty do not, as Mary said, have parents or grandparents or aunts and uncles at home to help them with their schoolwork. They perhaps spend a lot of time in front of a TV or some other kind of a screen instead of interacting with other people and their test scores are just not as high as we would like them to be. And we've spent a lot of time recently working on that achievement gap and we're really working more in the future. Our current Director of Curriculum, Kathy Stevenshins, is very concerned about this and is coming up with lots of good ways to work with these children and hope to close that achievement gap so that they are getting what they need to achieve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann Lee. Troy Byer.
And in addition to very good answers on that and I agree with everything they say, this comes back to, we need funding and we need resources to be able to tackle these issues head-on. And funding is essential to provide services to the students throughout all aspects, including addressing poverty at our local level and in our district. And in turn, when we provide more services and look out for our students, the benefit of this is that it strengthens our community as well. And looking forward, we have to have discussions and look at our resources in terms of how we can address this at the local level. Because the bottom line is we have to determine how to look out for the best interests of the students and that comes back through funding, safety, and security and looking at the resources that we have at the district level in terms of how to best address these.
Thank you, Troy Byer. Ann Lee, we'll begin with you on this question. It will be our last question before we move into concluding remarks. What impact have vouchers or privatization of schools had on our school district?
Vouchers and privatization of schools has had a huge impact on our schools. The voucher system takes money from us taxpayers and gives it to children who are attending private schools. In our town, that would actually be the religious schools that we have and it, we're taking money away from our kids to fund these vouchers and we are not providing the money that we, that these kids who, parents pay a lot of taxes, deserve. And so it's been a big impact and I see in the governor's, the current governor's budget that he is planning to put a little bit of a kibosh on that and I think that would be a really good thing. We cannot afford to fund two separate education systems. We've got our public schools and public schools need to be kept public and that's where the money needs to stay.
Thank you, Ann Lee. Troy Byer.
I want to start by saying I agree with everything that Ann said. Public money should be kept to our public schools and there's a number of factors as to why, but the first thing that comes to mind is our private system doesn't have a democratically-elected school board which oversees and makes sure to have input in the decision-making process. They lack that oversight and, you know, as it was mentioned, I think going forward, we have a governor who is very mindful of this, that knows that in terms of strengthening education policy, we have to keep our public dollars in our public schools and it's essential to, that's where, you know, you can do the most good and that's where the most resources are needed to move the most amount of students forward. So I absolutely agree with Ann. Public money should remain in public schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Troy Byer. Mary Breom.
And I would agree with both what Ann and Troy said. So I guess to that, I will just add, I belong to a Catholic church and I have nothing against private schools and Catholic schools or Lutheran schools, but, and I also, the money that I paid in my church, some of that money goes to support our Catholic school, which my children go to public school. I'm fine with that and I don't, I know their taxpayers, I know that they think they have a right to the money, but there's not enough money. There's just not enough and I have some statistics. So the private school voucher started in 2013, 14. This year, 2019, 20, the statewide voucher program had 7,140 students at taxpayer costs. For 2017, which was last year, the school year, there was $33.6 million since the beginning. That was how much was spent. Since the beginning in 2013, the total cost has been $84.9 million and that's a lot of money and we have so many more needs with socioeconomic, with mental health issues, with the safety issues, with all the issues we're talking about tonight. We're not against private schools, but the public money, we need that money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Breom. We'll now move into concluding remarks and we'll start with you, Troy Byer.
Well, I want to first start by again thanking the League of Women Voters and I hope tonight's forum provided clarity on the issues. There's not a lot of disagreements between us, so I know that, I feel like the voters have a good choice on April 2. I want to thank everybody for in attendance tonight and those watching. It's important to make your voice heard by calling in questions and it's important to showcase that we care about the issues. So I hope that on April 2, we can send a message of strong turnout for our area up and down the ballot because that's when people take notice. And through tonight's forum, I hope I earned your support tonight or if you choose to reelect me or you're Ann, please vote. It's essential that we have increased turnout on April 2. And I want to say that while we may not see eye to eye on all issues once we're on the school board, the first step is we need to address these issues. That's the first step in tackling these issues and we need to get together and collectively decide the best course to strengthen our district and in turn strengthen our communities. Now, if elected, I promise to be a champion for enhanced funding, school safety, and school security. And I believe that we must be inclusive through our policies and practices in order to obtain the common good for all students. I hope tonight's forum provided clarity for our questions to you tonight and I look forward to continuing these discussions in your neighborhood and if elected, continuing these discussions on the school board. Thank you.
Thank you, Troy Byer. Mary Breom.
Thank you. Again, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum and for everyone participating, especially the candidates and those in the audience tonight. I want people to know that I am very aware of issues and challenges facing education today. We need to continue finding ways to meet both the academic and social emotional needs of our students under these tight fiscal constraints. Education has undergone significant change over the years with many state and federal mandates continually being put in front of schools for implementation. The challenges we see students bringing into school are causing a need for additional support in the social, emotional, and mental health realm. I recently attended the state convention in Milwaukee and one of the topics dealt with stress, mental health, and well-being of staff members in schools. Just as I am concerned about our students and families who face anxiety, stress, and pressure which can negatively affect student learning, I am equally concerned about the well-being of our staff members who face many of the same pressures. I know that many in education have felt a loss of respect and voice in their profession and I would like to continue on the board to look at ways we can make positive change in this area. We need to work together and listen to each other's concerns. School safety is another huge concern to students, parents, and staff members. During my service on the board, we have supported the work of our superintendent to strengthen safety initiatives which include annual updates to our district crisis action plan, strengthening law enforcement and community partnerships, and securing funds for security infrastructure upgrades. I have the experience needed to face these challenges and I have a desire to help every single child who walks into our classroom doors get the best education possible while they are here. I ask for your vote on April 2 so that I may continue serving as your representative on this Wisconsin Rapids School Board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary Breom. Ann Lee.
Thank you. I too encourage you all to vote on April 2 and I also thank the League of Women Voters and the audience and my fellow candidates. Troy's right, I don't think there's a lot of difference among the three of us, but that's a good thing because that means that we have a lot of interested and caring people who want to do the best for our children and for our schools. I do want to say that we have a very diverse population in our town and we have a very diverse set of problems with our students who come to us each day for learning and for a lot of nurturing and care. I want to thank our teachers and our administrators who do such a fine job of being there for our children, of providing snacks, giving hugs, being there to support them, to teach them, and to take care of them. I want to thank our school board for being very supportive of our teachers and our administrators. And I want to thank the kids for just being wonderful human beings and their parents as well. So thank you very much and I hope to see everybody at the polls on April 2.
Thank you again for being willing to run for public office. Thank you again for being willing to run for public office. Troy Beyer, Ann Lee, Mary Breom are the three candidates running for two positions on the Wisconsin Rapid School Board. This concludes the second part of tonight's forum. We will continue with candidates for offices in Grand Rapids. So to our viewing audience, please stay tuned. That debate will begin shortly. Again, a reminder, please vote on April 2nd.